Listen, after the meeting, come on down. Let me get that.
All right. Microphones on. Yep, open the meeting.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, February 2nd, 2017. Please rise. Altogether now, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Opening comments? Vice Chair Enzo.
Well, first, I want to say, "Go Patriots," Sunday. Keep my fingers crossed. And secondly, I'd like to thank the Open-- well, not the Open Space Committee, but SWIM, Vipatic and her crew, and the Preservation Trust for purchasing the lot on Forbush Road. It's a huge asset to the town. I'm thankful that they bought it, and it's going to remain as open space, and they're going to be responsible for tearing the building down and taking care of it. So, very pleased with the Preservation Trust. Thank you.
That's very, very-- that's perfect. Exactly what we wanted.
Yeah, that's right. Turned out good.
T, do you have anything?
Nope.
That's it? I just want to say, yes, the abandoned houses-- there was six of them.
Five.
Six of them.
Six of six, that's right. The numbers are six. When we encumbered those abandoned houses, we don't check, and then there were fire-- actually, firetraps, and they were very, very tough shape. So, we've got not only those six houses that have been abandoned and on the rolls for the last 10 or 12 years that finally reaped some benefits, and we've got them either sold, rebuilt, knocked down, and that was huge for all the inspectors, police, fire, public works, building inspector, health officer, and wire and plumbing. They all worked together in a joint meeting with me, and we took care of that problem, and it was very, very well done. And I appreciate just follow-up and to stay on top of that with Town Council and his team, too. Dan, I was-- I meant to say, "Thank you very much." I also want to thank Enzo, I failed to mention. He worked very extremely hard on the FEMA lots and the size and the dimensions, and we reaped, I think it was 56 homes that got a better deal from this flood insurance. Sometimes that flood insurance is misleading because basically the flood insurance, you could go on and they could remember someone, we were paying $1,000, $2,000, that went up to $12,000. And the national-- the max payout is only $250,000, which was-- which is kind of deceiving, but thanks to-- thank you to you. It was a great job, and I'm glad you submitted the report, you accepted the report. Okay. We've got a busy agenda. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the prior minutes of January 19, 2017, the executive session for the 19th, 125-17, the Board of Selectmen and the fire station assessment committee.
May I still move?
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been second. Discussion.
Just that, I'd like to speak to the town that I made an objection to the-- any fire station that has to do with a public safety building will not pass by me. I think I've been saying it since September, but I'll reiterate it until it doesn't happen. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time of the-- on the Board of Selectmen, we have a citizens' forum. If anyone would like to come up and speak to the Board, address the Board on any subject matter, I ask you to please come to the center of the hall where there's a microphone and give us your name and address, and then we can hear whatever you'd like to hear. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you? Thanks for coming. Yes?
Hi, my name is Shannon Bianchi. I live at 14 Harborview Road in Haunt. I'm here to show my objection to the Open Space and Recreation Master Plan and the fire station and the Coast Guard thing, simply from the sense of, I disagree with ad hoc committees feeding you all this information. I feel like those committees should be set up more properly. I've detailed a letter to you guys. I've shared my letter with the town clerk and with Mr. Chilgrin. I'm waiting response from Town Council, and I'll get back to you guys in a couple of weeks. I just wanted to come and put a face to the name and say, "Thank you very much for listening."
What are you getting back to the Board of Selectmen in a couple of weeks? What's that about?
Mr. Chilgrin and Council has 14 days to respond to my complaint against the Open Spaces and Recreation Master Plan Committee.
What's the complaint about?
That it was not established in the proper manner. None of the-- I sent you a letter on this. The Selectmen had a letter that was dropped off a few days ago, but--
I've been busy for the last week. I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, I sent you an email outlining the process.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
I also sent you a letter a year ago about this.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Only one speaks, and when I speak, no one else speaks, okay? You get that?
I understand.
I don't understand. It's a great committee. A great committee. I don't understand--
I don't-- I don't-- I'm not here to disrespect their work. I understand that they've put a lot into it.
All right. Okay. Write a letter to us, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right. Can I just-- Excuse me, go ahead. Yeah.
I don't see it on the agenda, but I just wanted to let everybody know that we appointed Marsha Duvall on the FEMA committee, and she's going to be a great asset to us. She's a retired lawyer. She's perfect for the committee. I touch base with her almost every day, so I'm just-- I just want to make sure that we-- because it's-- I don't see it on the agenda anywhere, so--
Yeah, no.
She's being sworn in probably tomorrow, I hope.
You didn't put that on the agenda? Oh, good.
No, that's okay. It was a last-minute thing, so--
Oh, what a great person she is. She's great.
Yes, she is, so--
As are with-- that's good. Absolutely great. Great appointment, Enzo. Okay. The Town Administrator's report is next.
We have the Fire Chief here tonight to talk about a few items that we have on the agenda: EMS billing, write-off policy, ambulance enterprise, and the Ocean Rescue Boat, which is a potential article. So, if Mike, if you could come either to the mic or have a seat at the end there. Sure.
Well, you might want to-- don't get too close, Mike. You know, you're-- What do you want to talk first, Mike?
Taking them in the order that you have on your agenda, the EMS billing rates and in collaboration with that, the write-off policy. When I met with this board the other week with the budget presentations, I gave you a proposal on revising our billing structure, billing rates, and incorporating into that process and policy a formal write-off policy for those in financial need of consideration on their ambulance bills. What this billing rate proposal does is it takes the existing system, which is more-- it's referred to as an à la carte system, where you bill for each type of service that's provided during the transport, and it bundles it all up into set fees. And those set fees are more in alignment with what the Medicare and insurance companies reimburse at, so there's less difference between the reimbursement and the actual billing.
What's Medicare pay for?
What do they pay for? They pay a base-- bundled base rate and mileage.
What is that?
2016 Medicare rates for ALS, $7.24 a mile. BLS rate is $401.35. ALS-1, which is a standard ALS transport, $476.61, and ALS-2, which is more intensive treatments, $689.82. And the reason the ALS rates are part of this is when we work with our ALS partner, we do the tran-- they get in the back of our ambulance, we do the transport. By federal regulation, the transporting service has to do the billing for the entire call. So, we bill at the ALS rate, they bill us a stipend for providing the ALS service. And then, as you go further back into the packet, it explains out the financial hardship proposal. There's 11 points to the policy. It's pretty much if you call up our billing agency, request the form, complete the form and submit it, the hardship will be approved.
Is there a report in here from the billing company on what we did?
I had passed that along to the Town Administrator previously, and that was forwarded to you, I believe.
Do you have it? I don't have it here. You were forwarded that in an email, so I can get you another copy.
Is it ComStar? Are you done with ComStar?
We're finished with ComStar. We're utilizing Pro EMS Solutions. They're out of Cambridge.
I'm concerned about people not able to pay.
Right, and I understand that, and that's why, if you go to the very last page of this process here--
Now, I saw the farm they have to fill out. It's a lot of work for an elderly man, a person.
Can certainly help them. If they want to come down to the station or call me, and I'll go to them--
A lot of them can't-- a lot of them can't walk or drive down.
That's why I said that they can call me. I'll come help them complete the paperwork.
How about if we make that a Board of Selectmen decision? Richie?
I-- we can do that. I just-- I'm concerned--
For the hardships.
I didn't get the-- I didn't-- you know, we started when the ZAMWAS thing came up. We wanted to make sure of the people, you know, that can't afford to pay.
Well, first of all, guys, you're dealing with HIPAA regulations. You know, the person-- it's against the law to know people's names and stuff, so having him take care of it is not a bad thing.
I don't know.
I don't see why we should get involved.
Do you remember how many people that couldn't afford the ambulance ride?
I don't. It was a small number, and is it anything in excess of 100?
Anything within excess of 100. Excuse me, it's an automatic write-off for anything less than 100, which usually will cover the Medicare copays. Medicare requires a 20% copay.
So, we don't have--
That usually covers that.
We don't have that in the book yet.
Not in this book, but I can provide it to--
That is-- that's line number eight on the sheet.
So, how many--
So, since July 1st, when the new billing company took over, and I'm sorry, I don't have that sheet in front of me. That had been passed along previously--
July 1st of this year?
Of 2016.
2016, so it's last year.
July 1st, so for six months, approximately $7,500 was written off in billings.
So, what's in the ambulance rides? How much-- what's it cost for 100, someone?
The Medicare rate is 400. Our current rates are listed on the second page. A BLS transport is $1,205--
What's the DLS? What is that?
Nahant Ambulance.
Nahant Ambulance?
Nahant Ambulance.
Instead of saying DLS, say Nahant Ambulance.
Yes.
Because you have another ambulance comes over. The paramedics, they usually back you up, right?
The paramedics come over, we work together--
Right, no, no.
And it's one bill that goes out.
I understand. So, we wrote up $75 last year, so how many people--
$7,500.
$7,500?
Yes.
You wrote off.
That's right.
That's quite a few people.
In six months.
In six months?
Yes.
So, you're talking quite a few people that couldn't afford to pay. Am I right?
That have expressed that they were unable to pay, correct?
And they were-- how many were waived, do you remember?
Well, that includes waived.
And called--
Written off and waived fall under the same category.
They can't afford to pay, basically.
Right. If they call up the billing company and say, "I've received this bill. I don't have the financial resources to pay it," the billing company will send them a form. If they can return the form, or if they need assistance returning the form, we can help them. They submit the form, and the balance of the account is waived.
What did the town-- what did the town collect last year in ambulance revenue?
Last year, the town collected in gross revenue approximately $86,000. I believe that figure is-- let me-- that goes with the enterprise--
It's going to be in the enterprise fund.
Different sheet.
Now, to pay for the ambulance, which is a good thing, so--
Yep.
Eighty-six thousand.
Less--
Eighty-six thousand, yep.
There would be less expenses.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that's a great idea. I back it 100 percent.
Unfortunately, up until this point, there has not been a formal policy--
Right.
--for write-offs, and this just formalizes the policy.
So, do you want to go through the enterprise and then also--
Well, first, I would ask the Board to consider making a motion and approving the revised billing system and rates, and along with that, the write-off policy as presented.
It's no different than when ComStar had it. It doesn't really look that much different to me.
Why did you make--
I'm sorry, which? The write-off policy?
Well, no, the whole--
Package?
Package, really. I mean, they-- I mean, they used to forgive bills also.
They did, yes, but there was no policy that backed that up.
Right.
What is this comparison sheet that says Nahant? $50, $16.50 BLS, ALS-1, $21.50, and $31.50 ALS-2.
Right. Those are the proposed bundled rates. Those are the rates that I'm asking you to consider approving this evening.
And if you look on the left, it shows the individual rates that are bundled now in that--
Say what?
If you look at the left side, it says current, and then you look at the right side, it says proposed bundle. So, the current, you itemize--
Keep looking at the comparison chart.
Oh, I see.
So, if you go to the page before that comparison chart--
So, Medicare rates are what? $689, $476? That's a big difference.
It is.
Huh?
It is a big difference.
For Medicare and what you're charging--
Yes.
Or you like to charge.
That's correct, and what we currently charge.
And you currently charge?
We charge $16.50, so it's--
On average, our current BLS ambulance transport, the billing is approximately $1,400.
But you're now, you're going to what?
Now, we'd be going to $1,650 plus $50 a mile.
Plus 50, so it's $1,700.
Some-- depending on the mileage, it's typically about eight miles to get from anywhere in Haunt to either the two hospitals we typically go to.
Well, how many hospitals?
About $2,000.
You take them to Salem Hospital, right?
Take them to Salem or Union Hospital. They're equidistant.
Well, Union's going out of business.
In a couple of years. They will.
Sad state of affairs.
My only question was the $16.50--
Yes.
--for the Nahant ambulance was in the higher bracket, if you bracketed them? Just questioning how you got $16.50. I mean, $1,400, staying at $1,400, now that I know it was $1,400, might have been better, but--
Well, that $1,400 included the mileage. That was inclusive of the mileage charge.
But the Medicare rates only go up to $689.
That's correct, but when you bill Medicare and Medicare approves a transport, they only approve that amount. You're not allowed to bill the difference between their approved amount and what you charge.
Medicare's never paid-- hospital bills are the same way. They pay a third--
So, if we round numbers off, and we say that we bill $1,000 and Medicare will approve $500, the most we can collect on that account is $500 by law.
I'd like to think this one over. I just got a feeling, my instincts are telling me that the poor people, the people that really are the elderly are getting affected by this. I want to, before we vote on this, I need-- we need to go through this tooth and nail, and I like to have all the facts in front of me, too. I want to know exactly a recap. I don't have to know anyone's names, but I do want to know the facts, the numbers, the calls, the cost, what was billed, what was not billed, how many people were involved? Numbers, I just need numbers. I mean, if we're jumping up here, you know, you're talking Medicare's only going to pay 700 bucks, right? $689, and you're going to charge almost $1,400. There's a big drop. I don't know what the difference is. I mean, we're not--
That's what Medicare pays.
No, I understand, but I don't want to make money on the backs of the elderly who actually need an ambulance, and I don't want them afraid not to call for an ambulance in the town of Nahant.
What is--
We're paying the firemen and the-- we've got to, you know--
If I may, the elderly who are on Medicare, the most we can collect off of that bill is what Medicare approves. So, if their-- if the Medicare rate is $489, that's the most we can collect.
What about Medicaid?
Medicaid is even less than that, and it's the same rules.
Okay.
Whatever they approve, that's the most--
So, the elderly people that-- I think every elderly person is on Medicaid, at least on Medicaid--
They have to be.
Medicare.
So, I think they're all--
The 20% that's from 80% to 100%, that 20% if they had AARP, does that pay for it?
Yes, the secondary insurance will cover that other 20%, and that's only 20% of the Medicare amount.
Yeah, I still like to have--
I think--
I like to take some time on this--
I think--
Before we change it. There's no hurry. Why are we in a hurry to change it? I mean, we've just--
It just feeds right into the discussion on the enterprise account.
The enterprise account. The enterprise account is to pay for the ambulance.
Yes.
Yes.
To capture all costs.
I think the ones that it's going to hurt--
I don't--
Honestly, I think the ones that it's going to hurt are the young people that don't have health insurance.
Well, you can--
They're the ones that are going to-- it's not going to hurt the elderly at all, I don't think, because they're going to pay either Medicare or Medicaid's going to pay their bill, and it's going to be the people that-- and there's an awful lot of them out there that don't have health insurance.
I know somebody recently had a ambulance ride, and the bill was $1,800, so Medicaid turned it down completely.
Medicaid turned it down?
Medicaid. Boom.
So, in that situation, Mike--
That's interesting.
--that would have been no collection.
And that's what I want to see.
If it's declined by Medicare, if the person wasn't covered, then it's not covered by Medicare rates. If there's a different reason for it being declined, it would still settle at the Medicare rates, and then that person could very easily call up and request a--
I'd like to see all these records. I mean, I just, you know, no one's over checking this, and the billing companies, they have a tendency to bill, especially the elderly, you know? They get these bills, and they then they make some phone calls and probably scare the hell out of the poor elderly person or lady. I, you know, I like to check it all. I want-- and this has to be-- I want to check this. If you mind, we'll put it on for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and I'll resend the material again.
Yeah.
How do you feel about the write-off policy, which is a traditional policy?
The write-off, I got to go through that. I-- the write-off, I don't have the problem with the policy and the amount. I just got to make sure that it's going to be easier for the individuals, the elderly, to be able to fill out these forms. This is a big form. You've got 11 points.
That's not the form, that's the policy.
No, I understand it's a policy, but do you have a form in here?
No, they have a very standard form, name, address, account number, and so on.
You think the form should be in here?
I will very happily get that form for you.
See, this is what I-- this is what I'm missing. I like to get everything on under me when I'm looking at this stuff, you know?
This was just kind of sprung on us. We didn't--
Yeah, this came in, and I-- this was--
This was actually brought up at the last budget meeting, but that's fine. I think it's good for us to see all the material.
Well, I wasn't here for the last budget meeting, all right? I wasn't--
No, this was presented to you when we met downstairs--
Downstairs?
--with the budget presentation.
I don't remember this.
Yes.
I remember the write-off policy, which is fine. I have no problem with it, but I just-- we got to figure a way, and we got to ask a couple else seniors. I want to see the form. They have to fill out and sign, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And sometimes, you know--
What I'd like to see is, if I did my quick math right, is the percent of the income of 86K that was written off, a percentage around 12 or 13%. To me, that's pretty good. That's reasonable, but if you could get a percent of the other towns, perhaps, what they write off? I'd like to know that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, we should find comparables. If you're using like a Lynn or a Swansky, it may not be comparable.
Right, right, right. A lot of these names will be--
Yeah.
That's who I would utilize.
We've got meetings with the FinCon, and everyone else come the next two or three weeks, so whenever you're ready, we'll put it on for two weeks for the Selectmen's meeting, but if you have it earlier, we can review it on one of these FinCon mites. We got to meet with the FinCon. Is that right, Mr. Chairman? Monday night, we're going to start with you? I'm dying to get at you. That's good.
It's mutual.
Yes, I understand. Okay, Mike, what's next?
All right. The other part of the presentation involves the proposal for an EMS enterprise account. What this does is it takes all of the revenue that we've just been talking about, generated by the ambulance runs, puts it into a count that is used in the same concurrent year to offset the expenses of running the ambulance. So, you see before you a breakdown, a budget for the account, which pulls line items from the existing operating budget over to the EMS enterprise and makes it an even swap between anticipated revenue based on the town accountant's figures and what comes out of the town budget to compensate for that. So, yes, on the revenue side, you won't be seeing the ambulance revenue on the town side, but at the same time, that same dollar figure is coming out of the budget, the operating budget, and would be paid for directly out of the receipts. The other component of that is it allows you to not only justify covering all the costs of providing the service, but any surplus money that is in addition to the expenses for that fiscal year is certified as free cash, just the way certified free cash is done for the rest of the town, and then that can be rolled over year after year and used for the purchase of EMS-related capital equipment, whether it's a new ambulance, new stretcher, new AEDs, defibrillators, whatever is needed.
So, looking at this, it's approximately, if I'm reading this correctly, the revenue would be about $23,000 total, because after you take your expenses out?
Yes. Yes, I had to figure out where you were going with that, yes.
Okay, that's after--
So, the surplus money, that would be free cash, you're saying?
All right, so in other words, okay, so it's going to help pay the new ambulance down that we just purchased--
Correct.
--which we're going to get today, right? Did it come in today?
Tomorrow.
Our new ambulance is being delivered tomorrow morning. They're leaving North Attleboro at 7:00 AM.
Good, okay.
So, kind of cutting to the chase, this transaction creates a budget-neutral impact. All it's really doing is pulling out the details that were funded before with some of the revenues to balance it off, and it sets aside, much like the water and sewer enterprises, and it runs on its own, pays for itself. It shows a true accountability of the costs.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen place on the warrant an article to see if the town will vote to adopt an enterprise fund under the provisions of the General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2 for the operation of an ambulance service.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Boy, I see him, I see him, I can't miss him.
Okay, I, you know, I think the ambulance, I think the enterprise fund is a good deal, I really do. Because it'll separate it out and it'll, it'll pay for the ambulance, so. Okay, gee, I'm with it.
Yes, can I have your name, please, sir?
Ken Corangelo, Eighty-one Rollo Road. It's kind of a bad neighborhood, but.
It is a tough neighborhood.
It is. Selectmen, just a couple of clarifying questions and, and, you know, we've agreed to meet with the FinCon and the Board of Selectmen are meeting on Monday to review this in some detail, the entire budget, not just this. Couple of things with regard to the enterprise fund. Does that, does that take over all of the costs involved with the ambulance? Or a portion? We don't have the numbers, so I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Right now, the current proposal takes over almost all the costs. There was one line item that, for the first year, we're trying to leave in the operating budget just to see how the revenue falls out with the new billing company to make sure that the enterprise fund can fully support that additional line item.
And what was that line item?
That line item covers the EMT stipends for the career firefighters.
So the, is that the only personnel cost not included in the enterprise fund?
The only EMS-related personnel costs. So any callback overtime or EMS training overtime is captured in the fund.
Okay, and what about just the base, thank you, the base costs for the staffing of the ambulance?
That's the staffing of the fire department. That's the base cost of the staffing of the fire department.
So is any portion of that in the enterprise fund?
No, because that's the staffing of the fire department.
Well, isn't part of the point of setting up the enterprise fund to effectively capture all of the true costs that are in that enterprise?
The, the true cost of providing the service, we're, we're providing the fire service also. It's a concurrent service.
And it's also much like Water and Sewer. Water and Sewer co-mingles with DPW. And so we don't have a pure line, so this is an attempt to get as close as possible. Over time, it can be refined, but right now, it's, it's the closest possible.
Yeah, I, I, again, we'd have to, one question, I guess, on a request from the, in joint with the, jointly with the Chairman of the Finance Committee here. Request, could we not vote to put this, could you please not vote to put this on the article until we've collectively had a chance to look at this in more detail? There, there's some, there were some things we discussed last year in the cycle that are not covered here. And there was a significant gap, even with the billing, the, the change in billing, as we discussed it last year, would only take up a portion of the shortfall. It didn't come close to covering the entire cost. So it seems if we're not, if we're not covering the entire cost for your revenue, and we're not even including all of the costs, the concurrent ones and whatever else is left out, that's, it's still clouding things. It's still not really capturing the, the true value of the enterprise. So I guess our point is, I'm speaking here on behalf of.
I concur, wholeheartedly.
Chairman Brendan Ward of, what's your address?
Twenty-four Little Nahant Road.
Twenty-four Little Nahant Road. Again, just a few more minutes, at least of, of looking at this in detail would be helpful.
Well, we can, we can leave that article off at the time. We don't have to finish the article this week.
I'd like to hear what you guys have to say, because I think that, you know, the FinCon does an awful lot of work, the volunteers, and I want to, you know, this is, I'd like to see what the, the projections are also. I mean, I want to hear what they have to say.
What they're saying, last year's numbers.
Right.
Did not add up.
That's why I want to hear that. We talked about it Monday night?
We can. I think the one point that we would like to make is that in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, there's a large allocation for all of the personnel from the DPW. We allocate that through, we allocate through the benefits. We allocate through the retirement funds. None of those are included. So this is absolutely not an appropriate enterprise fund in terms of evaluating what the cost of the service is, because it ignores the largest piece of the cost, which is the labor and the benefits.
Right, okay. We'll wait.
I wonder if you should, I wonder if we should have the fire department set up a separate, you know, for the ambulance, a separate, the personnel ambulance, you know?
Let me go ahead and run the numbers in a comparable manner to Water and Sewer, just so we can see how it would look if you were to draw everything out.
Well, all right, I, I, okay, that's fine.
Motion to wait.
We're going to, yeah, motion's been made.
Resend.
We're going to rescind the motion here. So we'll hold off on this, Chief, okay?
Okay.
Then the last one is, we have a potential warrant article for a ocean rescue boat.
Before we get into that, hang on. I want to congratulate Chief. I want to know who did, you received a grant for nineteen hundred and seventy dollars for student awareness, fire education, SAFE, and twenty-two ninety-five for senior SAFE grants?
That is correct.
Now, who, 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 who wrote this grant up?
That would be firefighter Frank Papalardo.
Frank Papalardo?
Who wrote this grant. We worked together on it. He, he did the yeoman's work on it. He submitted it. He gets the credit for it. And he will be implementing the program. It's been many years since Nahant has been receiving this grant money. And we hope to be able to put together a comprehensive and formal safety education program, not only for the Johnson School, but also for the Senior Center and the elderly housing projects around town.
That's very good. Tell Mr. Firefighter Papalardo, that was excellent. Well done.
Well done.
I'd like to write him and get him a letter. Same with, you know, he's, these firefighters are down there, they're going above what they need to do, and it's really coming through. Now the rescue boat?
At the request of this board, the harbor master did some investigating on potential new ocean rescue surface vessels. We've submitted for your review several quotes ranging from ninety-one thousand up to, excuse me, if I don't remember the number off the top of my head, hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from one vendor. Another vendor is a hundred and thirty-four thousand up to a hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Do you have pictures of the boat?
Yeah. Yeah, they're in your packet.
Oh, they're in the packet, okay. What do you think, Chief?
Well, if we're able to put this onto the warrant, I think having a substantial surface vessel such as this would be an absolute asset to the fire department, the operations, ocean rescue, and other potential operations. They do have the option of putting a fire pump on it, which would enable us to adequately provide service for, say, one of our lobstermen if their boat were to catch fire offshore.
How does the, we have a Zodiac, correct, now?
We have a fourteen-foot Zodiac, correct.
How does that do in the summer time, spring, summer, and fall for water rescues?
It does okay. It's very limited in its capacity, size-wise and weight-wise. It has a single motor. Its best asset is that it's mobile. We can move it around, we can launch it from any location.
You, you also have another, Nahant Ocean Rescue Equipment needs totaling fifty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, plus roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars you want to put on the town warrant, which will round it out to two hundred thousand, which will really snowball into about a three hundred thousand dollar bill after maintenance and moorings and, you know? And I don't, and, and this, I don't see anywhere where there's training, wintertime training. I mean, we might have three or four winter incidents. And I can't see the, I can't see paying three hundred thou, you know, shelling out three hundred grand at the end of the day for something that, I mean, we can't even take care of our own infrastructure, never mind a boat. Now, Mr. Chairman, I move not to include this in the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Discussion? If I may, if you will?
Let me know when I want, when you let the chairman jump in. There's been a motion made, it's been seconded. Discussion?
I recall, I haven't missed many meetings. As a matter of fact, I haven't missed any. I don't recall stating that I wanted this here. I would like to see us talk about an ocean rescue boat, take a few meetings, discuss it. The last I heard was you were sitting over there and it was, well, you should get a boat. There was no vote, there was no discussion. I didn't get on this board to come here and see an ocean rescue boat for a hundred and fifty million dollars. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, if we talk about this, we set it up, maybe some other time, but as of right now, I'm, no way.
No, I understand. And if I may, it was mentioned very briefly in our prior discussions, and then I did receive a request from the Chairman of the Board to come forth with these quotes and information on actual boats.
And similarly, and similarly, the, the equipment for the fifty-four thousand was also requested.
Fifty-four thousand was, was requested at the prior meeting.
I asked the Chief to come up with appropriate monies. You need to create an ocean rescue team. Right now, we don't have, I mean, the harbor master's boat is, how old's that boat, Robbie? Nineteen ninety-nine, I mean, I mean.
It's out of service now, too.
Well, well, that was just for the harbor. We, we, we've never had, we've never had a unit. Well, we've had some rescue when those two professors died off forty steps, but we put some money into that. But it was just kind of like, you know, we had some repelling off the rocks, and we had some training like that, and they've had some other training. But I, I, just for an ocean rescue squad, I mean, did you get any prices from the Coast Guard of training?
The Coast Guard currently is not offering training to fire departments. I did speak with the fire chief down in Hull, which is also surrounded by water. They have a Coast Guard station there that shuts down during the winter. The Coast Guard does not have any boats there. They have worked in conjunction with the Coast Guard in the past on some training. He actually gave me, and I have to get the actual contact information, a resource for the environmental police, who will come out and help us provide some training. In addition, I've reached out to two ocean rescue training companies. I spoke, I had reached out two weeks ago. I actually spoke with one of the companies yesterday. And I'm awaiting the information from them, but they're more than happy to come sit down and meet with us and provide us training. I.
No, no cost or anything associated with that?
Their current cost on their website, which is about four or five years old, is, excuse me, six hundred and fifty dollars per person for the training.
Again, we had voted to suspend, Richie, the, the whole went to.
No, 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 I, I understand, but I, I just want to finish. Let me finish, Mike.
Okay.
You know, I was thinking, you know, when I was coming up and I saw this ocean rescue, have you gotten approval? This should be a separate unit, like, there's going to have to be a siphon set up for ocean rescue, like an EMT, EMT one, two, three, and paramedic. There's, there's X amount of dollars in the, in the, in the contract for EMT, am I correct?
Yes, and for ocean rescue.
And then if he goes up further to paramedic, he gets, right? So this ocean rescue would have to be a separate unit, right? Have to be a separate unit, and there's some sort of, we got to get some concessions from the fire union, too. Did you get a vote with, on the, or the fire union to proceed with an ocean rescue?
It, it's already in their contract. They, they receive a stipend.
They do, but.
Ocean rescue, they do.
They do, but customarily, over the, over the years, we've never had a winter ocean rescue.
Yeah.
That, I, I would think that, you know, that would really take precedent in their contract, because they didn't expect, they don't expect it. And again, I don't have a, they don't have a, I don't think they have a problem with it. I think that training and the equipment, I see you have a list of equipment that you need, that's fifty-four thousand dollars. But I don't see anywhere where there's training involved in this. Five thousand dollars, I don't think is going to cut it, you know? I mean, again, over a course of a year, year and a half, it, then they might, you might introduce that to them later.
My, my original request was substantially higher than that for the training salaries. In addition, we, the town administrator.
You had nineteen hundred dollars in your budget for training?
Well, it's fifty-five thousand, I think, somewhere.
No, that's for the, those are for the supplies. But anyway, you two voted already to suspend ocean.
For the winter, yeah.
For the winter. And what happened there? What's going on there?
So training, excuse me, training is ongoing in the fire department?
No, 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 no. Have you, when the chief got together and, have you, where are those signs that we asked to have made up?
Signs for?
For the, for the kite flyers. The people that go down there and tell them we can't, we're not going to rescue.
I just received a message from the member of the organization. He's got the signs, so we can install those now.
Oh, oh, okay. You got a copy? Did you get a copy? Is that the one where?
I sent you that copy that shows a flyer. It, it's a nice sign. And so he's, they've actually, I'm very happy to hear, hear that they're willing to pay for it.
They're willing to pay for it?
For the signs, yeah. And so we'll install them, they pay for it. It's, it's a great collaboration.
So right now, the Board of Selectmen's already voted not to proceed, correct, with ocean rescue?
My, my concern was, was liability on the, the men's part, because, you know, getting one of them hurt without the proper equipment could really put the town in jeopardy, so.
So the, the chief.
And I think that eventually you can introduce it to them a year, year and a half down the road. It would have to be contractual with them, I think, because this all started, again, this all started back in, when those two people drowned. Billy Waters started it, it was a good thing. Then it filtered over into the fire department. And I, I don't even know, who's in charge of it now?
The fire chief.
Okay.
And we have here with us some of the founding members.
Yeah, I know.
Back when that occurred.
I see him out there. I, I, you know, you, you're talking to the wrong.
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion on the floor.
No, no, I understand the motion here, but hold on, hold on. So you voted already to cancel?
Just for the winter, until they get, it's training. I mean, if any one of these guys wants to get up and talk about it.
So cancel, cancel the training of the ocean rescue?
No, the training, they can train. They can train as much as they want.
Well, if they don't have the equipment, how can they train?
So, what has, what has happened is the chief has continually been training them. So a training happened last weekend. It is without any water entry, and so it's part of his ongoing training process.
What was the training last weekend?
It was.
The training last weekend, we did low-slope rescue utilizing Stokes Basket, pulleys. We did inside the fire station, harnesses, things like that. Things that are applicable not only to ocean rescue, but other types of rescue also.
Inside the fire station?
Yes.
Yep. So it's under safe conditions.
Okay, you had something, you've only got one more shot, this is it.
Can I pay extra? Two, two clarifying questions, please. What does Hull do for a winter rescue?
What does, well, I know that, I don't know, and their Coast Guard station is closed, so.
I, I can answer that for you.
Okay.
I had a very extensive discussion with the Hull Fire Chief. They have a larger department than we do. They do have an ocean rescue. They actually have three surplus Coast Guard boats, similar to what Marblehead now has, as part of their fleet. Those are all put away for the winter, for winter operations. They have a fourteen-foot Zodiac.
Okay. That's, I was going to say, and, thank you, Chief. And does the environmental police offer winter rescue services?
Not locally. They come out of Boston, the same as the Coast Guard, and they have much slower boats than the Coast Guard.
Do, does any neighboring town have that capability?
The closest that we have that you could consider to be would be Marblehead. They do keep their boat in the water year-round and staff it from the fire station. One of the staffing crews would go down to the boat if needed. And we, we have an agreement with them that should we need to look at deploying, that they would start coming our way to assist. But they're, they're, again, about thirty-five to forty-five minutes out from us.
And I'm sorry, one more thing. If, you mentioned capacity was one of the reasons for needing this, because we've only got the single Zodiac. Have you considered buying a second Zodiac, which?
We, we do have a second, smaller Zodiac, a ten-foot Zodiac. That's, it's collapsed down, it's inflatable with an air bottle, in very short amount of time.
Gee.
Yeah.
I just, before my good friend Eddie gets up.
Yes, when you want to, Eddie, speak for, Eddie.
You want to speak first, Eddie? Eddie, come on up. Well, I just, I just want to say that, you know, again, the other day, Dylan called me. Dylan's the kite surfer guy, and he called the fire department to let them know that there was a kite blowing towards Swampscut. And not to send the ambulance, not to send the fire department, because that kite, it only contained a kite. There was nobody on there. My concern is that it was blowing pretty good, and if you launched that Zodiac, if he wasn't there, to call the fire department to say there was nobody on that, Swampscut already had their guys out looking with binoculars, not in the water. If you sent, if you sent that Zodiac out there, God, I mean, I, I just think that it could have tipped over. I, I think it would have been a disaster. And thank God, he was able to call and say, look, don't come. And I know that the fire department, I, I actually was going by him. They were up in Little Nahant with binoculars, looking at the kite blowing towards Swampscut. And I, I don't think they could find it, but.
No, we did actually find it.
This is the problem that's going to happen. You're going to send these guys out there, if it's blowing, for a kite. And, and it's happened a couple of times already.
And, and if I may, we're not going to send somebody out there for a kite.
But you don't know that.
We went out to investigate, we, we received a phone call from the patron at the Tides, or the police did, rather. We have an obligation, we have a duty to respond, to investigate. We, we had the prior knowledge of the loose kite. We went and investigated. Swampscut was able to visualize the kite with their binoculars. We identified it as the same description of the kite that was lost, and we all turned around and went home.
Okay, but again.
I have a question, excuse me. Why didn't you send out the drone you just purchased?
Because the drone is currently being serviced to get it compatible to what our needs are. As I explained to you at previous meetings on the drone.
A brand-new drone, and it has to be serviced already?
Not repaired, but slightly adapted. I explained that to you at a previous. I explained that to you at a previous meeting-
When did you-
That I was holding off on sending it out until we had resolved the drone question.
What's the cost of that?
But that would be a perfect use for the drone. You're absolutely right.
Agreed.
That's, that's what I thought it was for, and now all of a sudden, it's not used for a kite?
What's, what's wrong with it?
The camera that's on it, the thermal camera that's on it, is fixed, so you have to have the drone directly over where you're looking at, this puts a 360, 360-degree gimbal on it that can be controlled remotely, so you can be looking ahead as you're moving towards the situation, and the total cost for this configuration is $500. We already have the camera, it, it's just the connection to the drone.
So that's going to cost us another 500?
$500. And, believe it or not, they, they've covered the shipping, going back to them and coming back to us.
Has anybody trained on this, by the way? Has, has, has anybody even used it?
We have not, because as I stated at a previous meeting, we were waiting on that reconfiguration until the drone issue was settled with the board.
I don't remember what previous meeting, I don't remember this.
We've had this discussed a couple of times at various meetings.
We bought a, we bought a drone that don't work now, and then we have a kite loose, we can't send the drone out.
I think we should just, um-
I think, well, I, I think you should return it, that's what I think you should do.
We don't have that option.
I'm very serious, take the drone, put it in the box, and send it back, get your five grand, and we could pay for some radios or something, give something, I mean, I, I, I just think that's a disgrace, I always, I always did, as soon as I heard that drone, I go on vacation for a week, and you come back and you buy a drone, without our permission, I mean, without authorization, without even telling us.
And that's not-
Very, very upset about that drone.
And that's not-
Now all of a sudden, you have a kite loose, and we can't send the drone out, we've got to pay for another 500, because the camera is not aligned, hello? Well, I mean, I mean, this is just absolutely, just in our face, you're going to spend another $500, I, 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 you should send that drone back, Jeff, I'm telling you, I mean, here's the finance committee, and they're wondering, where, where'd you get the money from the drone, five grand, where'd you, what, what number, what budget?
The drone came out of the fire department budget as part of the collaboration with the emergency management and police department.
Well, can you imagine if I was on the member of the Fintcon?
It came out of the end of the year.
They never discussed that last year.
And nor do they have to, they have an expend-
No, they have, not, not that they have to.
It was money-
Now what's that mean?
It was money that they wanted to spend, Jeff.
You don't have to discuss the $500, the $5,000 for the drone to the Fintcon, and you just go out and buy it, and it came out of the budget, and they didn't know about it, we didn't know about it?
It was at the end of the year, yes.
So, I mean, all of a sudden, they said, gee, what kind of, the credibility of the board of selectmen, town administrator, fire chief, comes into question here, spending money without authorization, without the board of selectmen knowing about it, and I, you know, and then I hear that we, we've got radios we're missing, and we, we don't have radios for every one of the firemen, did you get radios for everybody?
We're currently looking into increasing our radio stock.
That's not what I asked you, the last time you were in front of me.
I understand that.
You need those firemen, whether they're, I consider the call men, the firemen, all in one, they need to be outfitted with radios, if they go into a burning building, they need that radio to save their life.
Absolutely, which is why I purchased the additional radios that I did, I purchased it to the extent of what I had.
You didn't purchase enough for everyone in, in the fire department, am I correct?
I purchased-
You had 18, and you need 23 or 25.
Richie is up to the department head to actually expend their budgets as they see fit, and so that's, that's what the fire chief has done.
Jeff, 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 I'm not going to go through that with you, okay? This is something that the board of selectmen is concerned about the welfare and the safety of our fire personnel.
As is the fire chief.
That's what I'm concerned about.
And so is the fire chief.
Now, well, I, I, I'm not too sure if he's worried about it, if he doesn't have a radio for everyone, but he's got a, a, a drone, and he bought it when, three months ago, and the thing hasn't, doesn't even work, and we just had a, a kite go out, and, and we're going to send somebody out there, or maybe-
Well, I'm thankful, I'm thankful Dylan called, but when, when was the drone purchased? When was the actual order?
June of 2016.
Okay, June, so that's the end of the year, Jeff, that was the end of the fiscal year, so it's $5,000 out the window.
No, no, not at all.
Oh, absolutely, come on, listen. Then, then he had to go for a reserve fund transfer to buy a generator that blew up on one of the fire trucks, I mean, they could have used that, could have been, went, $5,000 of that could have went towards that generator.
Different fiscal year.
The reserve fund has almost nil in it, and we're wasting money on stuff like this.
We're not, we're not, okay, okay, I'm not going to go into, okay, what else do you have, Chief?
I think those guys, the firemen one of the trucks-
Oh, the firemen, yes, lieutenant.
Firefighter.
Ed Staridi, 61 Spring Road, I'm with the call department here, coming on 21 years, sitting here and hearing what's going on, I, I can't believe how misinformed you folks are, I find it, it's an atrocity, it really is. First off, I keep hearing firefighter safety, firefighter safety, get more training, the firemen all do firefighter 1, 2 training, we all get certified and become firefighters by the National NFPA standards, NFPA standard is for firefighters on an engine company. You guys are, you guys are preaching firefighter safety, we don't have four guys in an engine company for a house fire, okay? They're more likely to get hurt at a house fire than they are going in the water right now, no question in my mind, okay? We're saying ocean rescue, we're saying fire, fire department, there's one in the same, they're not different. So if someone gets in trouble, who do you call, you call the fire department. You go, water comes through your system, who do you call, you don't call the plumber, you call the fire department, okay? They're one in the same, we, we, this, this does not have that separation anymore, that's crazy. You don't even know they're getting stipend down there, that, for the ocean rescue, you mentioned it, you shocked to hear that they actually get into stipends because of the ocean rescue now. But we're not, are prepared for the winter, we are prepared for the winter water. To say we're not equipped for the winter, you're wrong, absolutely wrong, no question in my mind, you guys are very misinformed on that. We've been 15 years, we've been swimming, every year, for 15 years in a row, we've been swimming in the water, we've been in the ice pack, we've been in flax pond through the ice, we've been in bear pond through the ice, we constantly train in the cold water. We have the equipment for the cold water, our boats are small because they have to be portable to get to where they go. The other thing is, by saying we can't do it, you're undermining the fire department, you really are. The way we work at a house fire or anything else is an incident commander, he tells you what to do at a house fire. It doesn't come from the mayor, it doesn't come from the board of selectmen, it comes from the incident commander at the fire. Same with a water incident, it's the incident commander, he says whether they go or don't go, and if someone's not comfortable going, they don't have to take that order, they can look the incident commander right in the face and say, "I'm not good with that," they wouldn't have to go. But they just come out and say you can't do it, because where, where are you going with this? If we're going to have a water incident, people are going to be jumping in the water without the equipment on, that's where it's going. Because if I end up down near the wharf, and someone's 10, 15 feet out there, I guess I ain't going to watch someone drown, that's where you're going with this. So you're really hamstringing this really bad. Another thing I've seen, you've done, you brought us back about 18 years in the fire department, we divide in the department, you really are on this issue. What it should be, it should be at the chief's discretion to set up his SOGs, which he's great at, he's put more SOGs down the pipe than any of the past fire, fire chief I've worked under here, he's great with his SOPs, he has a lot of stuff in line, you've got to get it back to where he sets his SOPs, and the senior person on scene, that incident commander makes the judgment calls on this. For you guys to sit behind a desk and say we're ill-prepared, we are prepared. Myself, I think four of us are qualified, his rescue squad was for the coast guard, we did of course to qualify us for that rescue cause. I've done additional training myself, but that's myself personally, but I think you're really hamstringing this whole thing, you really are. It's, it's, I, it nauseates me what I heard here tonight, it really, it gets to my core. You're very, 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 I still got the floor, you're very misinformed, you're very, very misinformed. I don't know who's coming in, and, and for all things that you are not prepared, we've done a lot of extensive cold water training.
You said you're not prepared, I don't, you know.
I've heard it just now, we don't have the equipment, we're not prepared, we're not trained. We, we are prepared, we are trained, not across the board.
There's a list of equipment right here, that he, he says he has to have to do it.
To, to replace-
Things get broken, worn out, we still have, there's still, you go down there, you can put a half a dozen people easy in this cold water.
Okay, so-
Here's the other thing is, don't forget, if, just because we go to a call with all the equipment and all the gear, doesn't mean we're going to jump in the water, because it's a risk worth reward, it's just like a house fire, you can't run into a burning, blazing building, if you know the person in there is not viable anymore, that doesn't work that way, it's risk worth re, reward. And like I said, where you're going with this, you're going to see, you're going to have someone going, you're afraid someone's getting hurt, you're going to have guys going in the water without the gear on now. You get a car, for example, get a car off the guardrail over the car's way, the engine gets down there, no boats coming, what are you going to do, wait for the coast guard to come?
Eddie, Eddie, you must have been around, will you remember the Scott pack issue?
Excuse me?
The Scott pack issue, down at the fire department?
No, I do not.
25 years ago?
That was before me.
Well, 20 years ago, they didn't have sufficient Scott packs.
Yeah.
And the Scott packs were not replaced, and they were broken, and they couldn't even get refilled, okay, and I don't know which fireman advised me on it, okay, when I find out, found out exactly, we had to go by an emergency transfer from the finance committee, I believe it was 22, $25,000 on 25 new Scott packs.
Yeah.
Brand-new, and then we made sure that they went out the next day and get them.
You got off cheap, they're over five grand now, a Scott pack.
Well, okay, but I'm saying, okay, so are you in favor of the drone, the $5,000 drone?
It wouldn't be high on my list of things, but it, it, it makes sense, I'd send someone out if you don't have to.
Okay, well, what, what's the union?
You know what I mean, I'm not going to support a drone, I'm not thought the issue I'm out here on board.
We have a small budget, we can't, we just can't afford to do stuff like that.
Well, I understand, you guys are hanging up on the drone, I don't want to talk about the drone, I'm talking about the water thing, I thought.
Let me just stop here, listen, I don't have a problem with the winter training, I don't have problems with the guys going out in the winter if they feel it's okay to go out. This was put on them, now, let me just say this, the regular guys, the regular guys, the eight guys that work there, most of them are saying they don't feel as though they're trained enough, they haven't gone in, let me finish, in the ice enough, okay, or in the, in the water enough. They're the ones, most of the ocean rescues are during the day, you're a rear fireman, you might not be there, Rob, Rob works, he might not be there, a lot of the guys that are trained, like yourself and Robbie and all those other guys, might not be there for them, so that could be a problem. Those guys need, they, they need their training, they need to get trained, because if there's a call, what happens if, Rob, let me ask you this, what happens if you're working? Are you going to be able to come and-
How is that different from what has been in place for the last 20 years?
Well, then why, this all came about because it was hard-nosed on them, that they had to do it.
No, they, they took a stipend and everything, no, no.
Well, that's not how I understood it, so, and we had to make a decision-
No, no.
Read the SOG.
No.
It says specifically, they do it if they're ready, if everything is right, if everybody is comfortable.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's all we're saying.
That goes right back to the incident commander, the night put out, it says.
Hang on, hang on, okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
No, I'm done, thank you.
You're done. Robbie, do you want to say something?
I just gave you some photographs, okay?
I showed the picture, yeah.
That's from the last 15 years, you can see snow in the photograph, you can see ice in the photograph, this is not necessarily what we find ourselves in, but to say that we have not been equipped these last 20 years, it's an insult to me, I was, I'm, I was formerly an assistant director of the ocean rescue team, Eddie, former assistant director of the rescue team, chief waters, all of these people have been putting people out there negligently using this equipment, and now, 20 years later, we find out that we are act, we were actually putting people in jeopardy, not in the least bit, not at all. You can see the equipment in that photograph.
Robbie, I, I, again, I want to- I don't know, I don't, listen, I don't understand, look, I have a list of equipment right here that he wants, okay, number one, and number two, do they have mandatory training?
Who?
Do the firemen have mandatory training for ocean rescue in the winter?
Everything is voluntary.
Okay, so-
The answer is no.
Okay, the answer is no, they need to have mandatory training if they're going to, if you're going to have, that's my feeling, if you want to have them go out in the water, in the ocean, in the middle of the wintertime, in a windstorm, and, and possibly get hurt, I don't have a problem with that, as long as they, they have mandatory training and they're okay with it, simple as that, and, and if, that's, that's just my, my feeling on the whole thing.
If I, if I may for a moment, just to give you an idea of what's happened in the course of the year 2016, the fire department responded 17 times to a, a report of a person in distress or an investigation for a possible person in distress. Of those 17 responses, 10 of those responses, not a single person or boat was put into the water.
Okay.
Of that, of the remaining responses, on one response, we pulled four people out of the water, another response, we, that we went on, that we didn't go into the water, were the two scuba divers, the harbor master had pulled them out of the water, another rescue, we pulled one out of the water, another call, we went out, but Dylan, actually, in a kayak, had retrieved the individual and was bringing them to shore, so-
Dylan in a kayak, who, who's that?
Dylan, the kite surfer.
Dylan is the kite surfer.
Is that in the wintertime?
This is year-round, this spans from February and March of last year all the way through December.
Okay.
Okay? So this shows that not only myself, but also the senior personnel who are on duty, are using common sense in making decisions, and using the facts that are presented to them.
Have you talked to the regular guys about this?
Absolutely.
Maybe we can have you talk about it, has the crew heard these details?
Excuse me, I, 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 okay, I've heard enough, okay, we've heard enough tonight on this, please sit down, I've heard enough discussion, there's a motion, I just don't want to get back into this fire thing, but I just, we'll take it under advisement?
Yeah, look, I mean, again, this all started because we had to have a boat on the, on the, on the warrant, I don't want a boat on the warrant, I'm not going to- My, the motion was on the table, on the floor, he had made the motion, I seconded it, I was ready to call the motion, but this was-
Okay, no, 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 okay, the motion's been called, okay, you want to call the one?
We're hearing, I'm hearing more and more from the firefighters, that I'm thinking more.
Well, we haven't heard from all the firefighters, we just heard, and we're not, we're not up here, by the way, to split the fire department, call men or regular men.
No.
I just, I, I guess what, the board, in their wisdom, are trying to protect the firemen from getting hurt, very simple, and make sure you have enough sufficient-
And let me assure you, so is the fire chief, but, but we're hearing that they are in fact trained, to a certain degree.
Training?
Trained.
But they need mandatory training, that, that's, listen, they have to, if you're going to, if you're going to train the call guys, or the guys that, like Rob, and who's dedicated his, a lot of time to it, Dennis, Eddie Staridi, that's fine, but all of them have to be, it has to be mandatory training.
So, then give me the funding to do that.
Well, I, listen, again-
Including salaries to cover them for the overtime to do the training, and the backfill for those who are scheduled to work.
So the, the selectmen have added another 1,500 into there, but we can continue that conversation, I think the real issue is through the warrant article, yeah.
But, but, but I'd still like to finish, because I've waited 35 minutes for my motion, what I, what I'm saying is that some of us are hearing from some people, and now we're hearing from other people, that it, it's confusing, I think we should really look at this later. Sure.
And that's why we have a fire chief, the fire chief is here to give us his professional And that's why we have a fire chief. The fire chief is here to give us his professional opinion, and he does a great job with managing of the department.
I'd like to hear from everybody involved, to be quite honest.
I think that the fire chief can bring you information from everybody.
I had a meeting this morning with all of the career staff. I had a discussion on Saturday with the personnel who showed up for the training. It was a voluntary training. I have available to me, and I can make available to you, all the feedback that I received from them.
One, one last question, if I may.
Yes.
Of all the firefighters, if some do not want to get involved, do they have that option?
The career firefighters receive a stipend in their contract to perform the service.
And if they choose not to perform?
Then they're in violation of their contract and their duty to act.
They all.
But, but there's a difference between refusing to do it and, in their best judgment, based on the circumstances, saying it's not a safe evolution. I wanna make that clear. That's a, that's a judgment call, that's a huge difference. I've told them before, I told them again this morning. I can't tell them today what their response will be tomorrow. Because tomorrow, the weather's gonna be different, the wind's gonna be different, it's gonna be a judgment call tomorrow. But whatever decision they make tomorrow, if they can explain to me why they made the decision, so I can explain it to you, I will back them ten thousand percent.
Why don't we invite them all up?
Okay, thank you.
Are you calling, are you regular men? I wanna, I'd like to have a meeting with all of them, and get all their input during the day, or whenever they can, all make it at once. Five o'clock at night. I'd like to get, I'd like to get up their input, they're all here.
One, one last question, chief. If they're getting a stipend, then why don't you have mandatory training? They're getting paid for it.
I can, I'm not allowed to mandate overtime, by law.
No, but I mean, they're getting, they're getting paid for it, they're getting a stipend.
These gentlemen don't get a stipend.
No, I know they don't, and I don't think that's right.
Who doesn't get paid?
The call guys. But that's not, that's not the issue. The issue is if, the issue is if, if the regular guys are getting a stipend for it, then why don't they have mandatory training? They're getting paid.
You mean the call men don't get any, any?
They get their regular pay, I think.
They get paid their hourly rate.
Their hourly rate, for training too?
For training also, yeah.
And how much is that?
It varies by person.
What's that?
Just historically, for the facts, we had two people die here back in ninety-seven, they drowned. There was no ocean rescue. We had a couple closed lines and some life preservers, we threw them, and it was a bad situation. At that point, the call department, a few call guys, myself, Robbie, Eddie Staridi, there were about six of us. We founded the ocean rescue. Had nothing to do with the fire department. We asked, the firefighters did not want anything to do with it. So the police graciously took us under their wing, and Chief Waters ran it. Ultimately, it was transferred back to the fire department. Still today, the ocean rescue is comprised primarily of called firefighters, who do not receive any stipend for anything to do with ocean rescue. The training has been provided typically by Ocean Rescue Systems in Portland, Maine. They come down, Joe Mokri, and comes down a couple times a year, and we funded that through the town, and they would train us, on the rocks, in the water. That's where we got our training, and then from that point, it was train the trainer, okay? But we did get training from Joe Mokri, the town bought the initial batch of equipment. Now you fast forward twenty years. We've been doing this over and over again. Mokri still comes down, that's the best training you can possibly get. He's the expert, all right? We still don't get any extra money for being, I'm an E M T, I work here, I work an E M T in Beverly. I work the streets, I know that is what I do. But I don't get a nickel to be on the ocean rescue. It's voluntary, all right? All these guys are volunteers. That's what we've been doing for a long time. So when we say we need some equipment, yeah, it would be nice to have some equipment, all right? But when you get into this whole, what is training, what's adequate training, what's inadequate training, if you had Joe Mokri come down three times a year, it'd be golden, all right? And you wouldn't have to decide who's gonna be on the team, who's not gonna be on the team, because somebody who really wants to be on the team will be on it, as we've proven for twenty years.
But you know, also, you know, we, we gave Ocean Rescue three hundred thousand dollars to get it started.
Right.
Remember that? Three hundred thousand dollars. They had an O V A R, I think you've been using.
It was ten, it was ten thousand for some.
We brought in the Navy SEALs to assist you in repelling.
We did, I was there.
Yeah, up and down, backwards and forwards. Those state police that came in from New York, they're Navy SEALs.
Absolutely.
I got them down here for you. And I'll be honest with you, you know, we're just concerned, okay? All we're concerned, this whole discussion, is on safety. And I, you know, I don't, you know, I'm seeing the equipment, and the answers we're getting from the new fire chief, you know, and as I said earlier, he's from Linfield, and I don't remember an ocean up there next to Linfield, okay? You've got a whole brand-new, you've got a whole brand-new thing ballgame here going on, especially with these, these people on the kites. We've had one major accident already over those rocks, and he, he got, he got very badly injured. He was blown over from the Doggy Beach over to.
I was there.
Yeah, no, I was there too, and I couldn't believe, he was lucky, he didn't kill himself.
And I'm saying, I'm not here to be controversial, I just want you to see the real picture of where, who's actually on this team, who wants to be on this team, and the people, ironically, who are on it, aren't the ones that are financially benefiting from it.
I'd like to get everybody on the same boat, the common and the regular men.
Yeah.
Yes, Brendan?
Can I ask a point of clarification? It seemed like he just indicated that there was no money involved for ocean rescue, and that these men volunteer. Can we get a clarification whether they're paid their call firefighter rate when they're doing ocean rescue, or are they truly volunteering? So they're getting some money or no money at all?
They are getting paid their hourly rate as call firefighters, for training and responses.
How much is that rate?
It ranges from sixteen twenty-two to seventeen fifty an hour.
But it's not volunteer?
It is not volunteer.
No.
All right, all right, all right.
So the motion, the motion's on.
Been made, okay. Do you wanna rescind that motion until we have a chance to review this Monday night with the finance committee, okay? And find out, we know we got a fifty-four thousand dollar information on supplies you need, correct? And the boat's a hundred and twenty thousand, which is gonna need more, because if you're gonna launch that during the winter, that has to be hanging over the wharf somehow.
Well, okay, the.
Am I, okay, that's, that's.
No, the, the, the motion was for the boat, and I'm comfortable with saying no to the boat, right now. We don't have the money for it, correct?
Motion's been made to.
T made the motion, I seconded it for discussion, and it turned into this, but.
Forty-five minutes.
Are you approving the fifty-four thousand for the supplies?
No, it's not the, it's not the, it's the boat.
The warrant.
No, the boat is the first one.
Okay.
So you don't wanna purchase the boat? I'll put an article in for the, for the townspeople. You don't want the, you don't want that article to go on the warrant and let the townspeople discuss and debate on the ocean rescue.
No, it's got nothing to do with ocean rescue.
Well, it is.
It has to, it has to do with the ocean rescue boat.
The basis for ocean rescue is that boat. You can't have him go up in his, his harbor master's boat. That's, well, I tell you, I've seen him out there by himself, trying to collect a sailboat off of the, behind Kelly Green's, and I'm, I, he's very, very good, but he needs two bodies out there at least, and that boat is not ready for that. So wouldn't you rather put the article in for the, especially if it's such a, let the townspeople decide on the, on the, let it up to the people, let them decide whether they want an ocean rescue, the thing would, should the town and the hunt be involved with ocean rescue? That's the question.
Yeah, sure they should. They should, they, I mean, I think they all agree on that. The point is, where are we gonna find a hundred and fifty grand for a boat? Let's add the maintenance in, let's add the, all the other costs that go along with it. Where are we gonna find, let's not talk one fifty, we're talking probably double it.
All right. I just, I, I just think you, the point's being missed here, because if we don't get the equipment, the fifty-four, the hundred grand for the boat, I mean, it just, it just, we can't send people out there in a storm. And usually it is a storm, windy, waves, when they're out there, so, okay. So the motion's been made, and second, not to.
I think Mr. Thibault would like to speak one more time.
Wait a minute now, wait, no, we've had enough, no more discussion. I wanna shut it off.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna.
What are you gonna say, God, Robert?
I just, I just wanna say that, in order, I'm supporting a no vote. Because I don't know how the boat is going to be used. Is this, you know, and when I say that, it's, how are we planning on launching it? Where are we planning on launching it? Is it gonna be an all-year boat? You know, this came to, to my desk last Saturday, and I got just some quotes as quickly as I could. But I would like to have a discussion with everyone to find out how it is we intend to use this, and then we can spec it out more accurately.
Well, we'd have to keep it in the water all year round, I would think, and then we don't have, we don't have floats in the, in the wintertime.
And this is exactly.
It's ridiculous.
This is the exact discussion that I would need to have in order to confidently give you what you need.
Well, I would think you have, you have to put that boat at the end of the wharf, on the davit, and you swing it over and drop it down and launch it. That's the only place, that's the only place I could see during the winter months without having the float.
That would be the absolute ideal. A second, a second option would be to just have it at the top of the slip on a trailer, and we can just run it down and launch it. But, that said, like, we haven't had this discussion.
This is the discussion I started at eight o'clock. I want this to be further discussed. That's why I'm motioning no. Thank you, Robert.
Motion's been made, and seconded. All those in favor, sing, sing by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, so we will bring back the other three items for the next meeting and continue those discussions.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief. You're doing an excellent job for the town, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is the F Y two thousand eighteen budget review. We have had a series of meetings and discussions. At the January nineteenth meeting, we sent a preliminary budget to the finance committee for their review, and it's starting the process. This is obviously an ongoing, developing process. What I appreciate this year is that the selectmen are playing such a strong role in the review of the budget and the setting of budget items. So, through our ongoing discussions, we've made some modifications to the budget. Those items are the D P W budget, there's been some contracted engineering services removed, the police capital, the cruiser was removed. And then the warrant article is something that, you know, we, we just talked about for the purchase of the ocean rescue boat. The sum total of those removal items are about fifteen thousand seven hundred. I placed that in a line that can be used for warrant articles or other purposes at this point, and so we can continue to talk about that.
Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand seven hundred. The savings from these items that, one, two, and three. So, looking at it, the budget is probably the most efficient budget that I think I've ever seen. It's less than one percent increase. You're about point seven one percent, and that's incredible. This is a very lean budget. We are using all of our free cash and all of our overlay, and this creates a balanced budget with the items that you have asked me to include. So at this point, and again, I know this is an ongoing budget development, and we will have continued discussions between the selectmen and the FinCom. I'd like to actually put these items in there, pass it to the FinCom, and have them start working on these items, instead of the last items that they received on January nineteenth. And I should say, are there any other additions or concerns that you have?
I do have a concern. I'm looking at the warrant, and I see that you wanna borrow close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the M W R A.
Correct.
Why?
Well, just, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand, which is our traditional article.
I need to know why. I mean, why are we borrowing money when we have money in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund?
I can send you a summary sheet on that, I just sent it to Brendan today. What we're looking at is we have about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of pump station repairs that need to occur. That came from the master plan, and so we can fund some of it this year, using some of those funds, but we need the full amount for funding the rest of it. And then we also have, I guess I'll point to this document, it's tucked in there. The FinCom had asked when you come Monday if you could have a list of additional concerns. If you look at the items in the middle, section four, A, B, and C, they identify what I consider to be items that we've talked about, so I put it in here for your consideration. The sewer pumping station, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, Bear Pond Pumping Station, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and Ward Castle Fox Roads, about two hundred thousand, to deal with the drainage. So those are items that we need to continue to talk about, but the M W R A money, that will pay the two eighty-two for the sewer pumping, excuse me, I was, excuse me, I got ahead of myself. So that's the sewer pumping station. That'll be the hundred and twenty thousand and the sixty thousand that we traditionally fund as well each year. M W R A, we spent all of the money on the last two projects, which are Swallow Cave and Warf Street Water Projects.
So, no engineering costs, no, I mean, I need to, I'd like to see a detailed, I'd like to see a detailed.
I can provide you that.
Penny, to the penny, from last year, also. I wanna see last year's, because we do have money. And the pumping stations, we have, how much do we have in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, about half a million bucks, roughly?
Or?
What do we have in the fund, total?
For what purposes? I mean, we have reserves, and then we have borrowings and capital.
Just reserves.
Reserves. Water and sewer, are you looking at? Okay, so for reserves, we have two hundred and eleven thousand, yeah, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
I guess my concern is, you know, I understand it's zero percent interest, but I'd like to see what we're spending it on, if it's just, you know, being spent on an engineer, or if it's being spent on a vehicle, or, you know, I wanna know where every penny goes. I think that it's only fair to the people in town, because once that money is allotted, you can spend it pretty much on anything that has to do with water and sewer.
Well, certainly. I, again, provided Brendan Ward, chairman of the finance committee, information such as that, so I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And it does itemize. So.
Do you want some?
I just, I have a question, and again, in preparation for our meeting on Monday. If you recall, when we recommended approval of this article last year, we recommended it with reservations because of some emergent work. And with that statement, you had, you had also promised a long-term, forward-looking plan for capital improvements, et cetera, to the water sewer infrastructure. What you provided is a historical look and what's currently needed, which is part of the, part of the answer. But what we're looking to is a longer-term plan looking ahead, so we can figure out which parts should be funded through borrowing, which parts can be funded from the reserve, and which parts can be funded from the operating budget. So the assumption that we need this loan every year is based on a, it's based on an assumption. And it's fine, it's zero percent, that's great, it's still gonna be paid back at some point, we're just adding principal to it year after year after year. So, that was the reason we had, we had a long series of discussion about this during last year's budget cycle. And, you know, we acquiesced, frankly, to pass it, to recommend passing it, but with reservation, there are many other ways to pay for this stuff without borrowing. So, just 'cause it's free money does not mean we should take it.
I think that, you know, that's why we, we're into the, still in this fiscal year, and we need to know where it's all going. And I think that's what I just asked them for, and that's a good point.
Well, you, you, you deliver a plan on the hot-top plan, sidewalk and streets.
Yep, and we have one for sewer and water.
Do the same for the pipe, for the infrastructure, because I think, you know, some of these, like Willow Road, and the traffic doing on Willow Road, and those pipes are so light, we're, we're breaking gas mains and water mains on that street and Emerald Road. It's like a, it's like a checkable square out there with the patches. So I think maybe we need to get, and when you do that, when you make up a plan to replace the water sewer mains, you should also have the gas company in and replace their mains as well.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, and that's, that would be the smart way to do it, though, that we dig up these streets once, not keep digging them up and patch, patch, and here and there. And I would start with Willow and Emerald, because that's where all the pipes are breaking.
I will say to your point, Ken, is that I've been working very closely with Dennis Ball, the new D P W director. And this last couple weeks, he's been loading me up with a lot of his master plan requests, both water and sewer. And that's where some of this information is coming from. So let me work with him to see how far he can project, given the fact that he's only been with us since June.
Excuse me for interrupting. I, I see you, did you people wanna address the board? I didn't hear you?
Just wanted to see what was going on in town.
Oh, fine, I, I saw you sitting, usually somebody, I didn't want you waiting all night.
Just don't have people come to, you know, see what you have to say.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So you can itemize everything that.
I can, and I'll get to that list.
All right, let's go.
All right, now, which brings me to.
Yep. Who's front of this meeting, FinCom or us?
I don't know. I, I, I'm listening, I'm hearing, you know, and I hear Richie's comments about the gas company. We, we belong to the Shade Tree Trust. Did you know that? Okay. We belong to the Shade Tree Trust, the town in the hunt does, amongst other communities. If there's a gas leak that's killing trees, and that's a big concern now, I guess there was somebody out in the front of the town hall the other day discussing it. The guy, actually, the guy that did the W Y Grace, the lawyer that went after them, is going after the gas company for all their leaks. And I would really advise you to get a hold of this, because we're a member of it, and they'll replace, they'll, they'll replace the trees. They'll make the gas company pay to replace the trees that were killed by gas, gas leaks. And there's tons of them in the hunt.
I understand we lost the whole row back here on Central.
Okay, so.
Right behind town hall.
Okay, so, if that's the case, then you need to get a hold of them, and.
Here you go. All right, that's the whole.
Yeah, I have it here too.
Yeah, okay.
That was actually brought to me, to my attention by a former. Yeah, I got that. A former selectman, Mike Manning, 'cause he was part of that whole thing when it, when it, when it happened. And it's, so if we're losing trees because of that, I would expect the gas company to pay for them. And you gotta let this guy know, because it's my understanding that he's gonna sue the gas company. And, you know, he's gonna make them accountable for it, there's gas leaks all over the hunt, so.
Yeah, I think it may be the same person who submitted a warrant petition that we'll be talking about on the warrant.
Okay. The second thing is, is, I gotta tell you, I'm really disturbed by this, the board of selectmen didn't know this, that we're losing forty thousand gallons of water a day. And Dennis is on top of it, taking care of it, and this should've been taken care of a year ago, and I don't understand why we didn't know that.
When I came here, that problem. When I came here, that problem was still, was in place, and we've been trying to solve that issue since, and so...
That's a day, that's roughly ten thousand bucks a month. I mean, who's, we have to pay for that. I mean, is it coming out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund? I mean, I don't want to stop bleeding, because, you know, we have a water leak that wasn't taken care of, and whether it's the meter at the rotary, that's, metering is wrong, or there is truly a water leak, and I know Dennis, Dennis is on top of it, and I really, I'm thanking him for it, because he's really doing a good job on it, but I don't understand how we didn't know this, that there was a forty thousand gallon water a day leak.
How do we know, how, how, how'd you know that, forty thousand gallons a day? Who told you that?
I just, I, well, I'm not going to...
Hold on, Dennis, do you know about this?
I do. Again, it was in, it was a problem that was in place when I got here, and they've been working on it for a couple of years before I got here.
You need to tell me, since you've been here for a year and a half, we've been losing forty thousand gallons of water a day?
We've had a large loss or unaccountable water, and we've done leak detections three times last year. We're doing a leak detection this year, and each one of them only comes up with a small amount of leaks, and so we can't figure out why it's unaccountable.
It could be the meters, too.
It could be.
I mean, it could be, it could be the meters.
It could be.
It could be the thickness of the pipes going into the meters, they might be calculated wrong, but this is a real issue, and I've got to tell you, I'm really upset that we didn't know about it, I didn't know about it, and...
That's the first I've heard about.
Because I'm the type of person that, you know, I want answers yesterday.
Forty thousand, forty thousand gallons a day?
That's an awful lot of water.
As Enzo said, it may just be a meter issue, but that's something we should be trying to, definitely trying to get a hold of.
Well, we're paying MWRA that money. I mean, they're charging us for forty thousand gallons of water we don't have.
Yep.
So why wouldn't you bring that up to the board and advise us on the board on one of your meetings?
It's an ongoing pursuit. Again, we do leak detecting, and...
No, no, I hear what you're saying, but how come you didn't bring it to the board? And say, well, listen, we're losing forty thousand gallons.
Because this was a issue that had been here two years before I got here, so my assumption is that you had actually known about it.
Is there any other issues that were here two years ago that we should know about it now? Is something else that I don't know? Are we paying for cell phones, or some, I mean, is there something else that I don't know? I mean, forty thousand gallons a day, I mean, what the hell is going on? That, you know how much money that is? I mean, we're getting charged for it? I don't understand it, and we've got a brand-new superintendent public, I imagine he's all over it.
No, he is.
Yeah, he's probably trying to figure it out. And it sounds like the meter problem down at the end of the causeway. You just can't lose forty thousand gallons a day unless someone's running their water, I mean, I, I mean, unless they got a couple giant swimming pools off the coast here somewhere, you know?
Yeah, it's been difficult to determine where it's coming from. One of the things that we're talking about is putting meters in different locations so we can isolate out where it is. It could be as simple as a sprinkler system.
Yeah, but this has been going on for, since you've been here, a year and a half.
It's been going on for about four years.
You're on top of it, Dennis, right?
No, 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 no. You knew about it when you first came here.
It was brought to my attention. That's why we did the three leak detections.
All right, I don't want to, okay, I don't want to discuss it.
So let's...
Let's find out what we're doing here, Superintendent. Let's send out some cameras, some meters, see if the meter's at the end of the causeway is calibrated correctly. When we had this leak twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago, we found that the meter at the causeway was incorrect, and the line that, and the line that MWRA as well was incorrect. They, we configured it, we did it correctly, and we billed them back for the money they took from us.
Has anybody, let me ask you a question before I, because I'll forget. Has anybody checked the water main coming into the Hott on the beach? They did blow a hole through that, you know, when they were doing the beach over. It was, they, DigSafe marked it wrong, and they drilled a hole through it, and it was like a geyser, so...
This is our next step. Right now, we're in the process, meaning yesterday, today...
And I'm glad you're doing it, Dennis.
We're in the process of, we have a leak detection company in town. That's the first step. We don't know it's a leak, all right? That's one of the avenues that we're looking at. It could be, it could be bad meter, it could be a bad read at the front end of the system. We're in the process right now, very, very aggressively, trying to solve this problem. And we're going to, we'll address it, once we have some hard answers, and early next week, from at least the leak detection folks, who use very, very sensitive technical equipment, we'll have, we'll have a better idea where we're going.
Can you, can you brief us on it after you're done, the Board of Selectmen? Will you brief us on it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we'll put together a report, we'll put together a report. And also, you and our contracted engineer are working on that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, you've got a couple of engineers down there, right? We have as consultants?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, bring them down and ask them to help you.
Yeah.
They're here. I'm in touch with them on a daily basis.
Paying a lot of money for these consultants, all right.
All set?
Yep.
So, looking at the budget, again, we have a list that the FinCom would like to see, and so please take a look at this and see if you want to add anything more to it, but it also gives you kind of a view of some of the stresses that we have.
Okay, yep.
Anything else on changes for the budget at this point? Realizing, of course, this is a dynamic budget, and there will be other changes in the future.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's dynamic, you're using it, as you...
I'd just like to see, the pumping station in Bear Pond, the main pump is underperforming twenty-five percent output. I can tell you that when I was a kid, the Bear Pond was very deep. It was considered bottomless. I'm assuming that it's twenty-five percent output, and I'm just assuming this, because it's probably under a bunch of muck.
Yeah, I think, Dennis, if you want to speak to that?
But if it's in muck, if it's sitting in muck, it's not going to pump anything. Correct. We need to do a little bit of engineering in here.
So I think, no, that whole drainage, I mean, we appropriated twenty thousand dollars from the...
Grant.
From the grant, from the open space master plan, to deal with that, to clean the drainage, you know, to do the drainage, and Bear Pond has to be dredged. It has to be completely dredged of all of the, whatever's in there, golf balls, muck, everything, and it, you know, it's not as deep as it used to be.
Right. So part of the, part of the system, which is the low end of the system, from an engineering standpoint, is the gravity pipe that runs from Bear Pond out in back of the Ocean View.
That's the clapper valve.
Right, so that dead-billed clapper valve, all right, is not functioning the way it should be, primarily because it gets clogged on a regular basis. Coughlin had designed another system, end system, that may be more appropriate. If I can get that functioning, we can, that point, we'll run a little bit more efficiently than it is, but the pumps, the electric pumps that are there now are undersized for that, for the job we're asking it to do.
They're still running, though?
Oh, yeah, they're running, they're running, but like I said, the GPM from a volume standpoint is substantially lower than what we need.
Okay.
So these are the items that Dennis has been bringing forward in the last couple of weeks, and so we'll scurry to try to get them funding. What, some of these items, you'll see that when I give you the information on MWRA, water and sewer repairs, and then sewer valves.
Yeah.
All of those will roll into that as to what he's using this year and future years. So you can see that he needs these fundings desperately in order to keep these, dealing with this, what I consider to be benign neglect.
Well, in the sewer, the pumping station, you're talking about the main station that Lowlands, correct?
The two eighty?
Yeah.
That's for the entire system. A bulk of, a bulk of the two eighty is about a hundred and thirty-ish?
The building's falling apart.
Is for the, is for the critical infrastructure that's down at Ward Road.
So he's, you're dealing with that now.
I can't understand why this was neglected for so long. I really can't. I mean, it, it just, and it just turns into a nightmare at the end of the day, so...
So the pumping stations that he's talking about, as you go around town, you'll see that there's a...
I know, I know where they are.
You go into the ground, and they're there. So there's a series of them that have, through the master plan, improvements that are needed, and this is what he's bringing forward.
You're at eleven, eleven in town.
I'd like to take a tour of the main...
Ward Road.
Ward Road.
I think it's a good, good concept.
Station, I've been in there a million times, but I'd just like to see what it looks like now, so we can move forward. And then the Ward Castle Road, Fox Hill Roads drainage system, two hundred thousand dollars.
That's a conceptual number.
Right. I mean, again, we don't know what that's going to cost, but this is, this should be top priority. This has been neglected for so long, they're underwater, I mean, I've actually seen water bubbling up from the Catch Basins. I don't understand why they haven't jetted them. I don't understand why they...
They've jetted. The problem is, is that we can identify, I can identify right now, one of the pipes that have collapsed, so...
Okay, good.
So part of what we're doing is, part of what we're doing is Phase Three, we'd like to find grants that would allow us to do some of the improvements that we're talking about here as well for the Castle Road, Ward Road area. But again, going back to the budget, these improvements have been incorporated. I will pass this on to the Finance Committee as a balanced budget with eleven million five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, and that's about a point seven one percent increase, less than one percent.
I've got to tell you, I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on this until I see, I want to see the actual figures of that.
Certainly.
That's just my opinion of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, I mean, the MWRA borrowing. They asked for something last year, they asked several things, and, because I attend their meetings, and they're very comprehensive, and they're very good, you know, we, they deserve that, so, and I deserve it too, because I want to see what all this money's going to.
We can certainly provide what we can provide, given, again, that Dennis has been here since June.
No, I know that.
He's doing a good job, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, then looking at the warrant, what you see in your section of your binder is that we have a small list of items I'd like to walk through and talk about. The, behind that is a list of, or the, a draft of the warrant, and you can see the highlighted articles that have been added. Some of them are petitions, some of them are the routine capital items that we deal with, and this is a work in progress. If you can give me some direction on this potential new article list, I can then finalize that, and for now, at least we'll, I can shuffle the articles around so we have an order to them, and then pass it on to the Finance Committee, and then continue to work on it.
I move that engineering costs not include, be not included in the warrant.
Engineering costs, where's that?
Potential new articles.
Potential articles, number one.
Potential new articles? Recede. Well, you want to go through them all, T, first, or you want to just... I'd like to do one at a time. One at a time, okay, all right, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Discussion?
Discussion, you want any discussion?
Yes, this is, this calls for a review of all street signs, speed limits, traffic patents in the town, thirty-five thousand dollars, and I'll use this for all of the articles that I'm not in favor of, moving on.
Why would you want to, why would you not have that done? I mean, for thirty-five thousand, have a study and get all the stop signs and the one ways, and get it all...
Because the police can do it. They're allowed to do it now. Charlie Baker, I mean, Governor Baker has given the towns the rights to post speed limits. I mean, to me, the cops can go around and tell us where the stop sign should be, where the, what the speed limit should be. Plus, I believe I was talking. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That thirty-five thousand dollars, given the fact that everyone's tightening their belt, it was my first sit-down downstairs with Police Five Public Works, that the town administrator, everybody tighten their belts, I can't see thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I, you heard mine, so...
All those in favor, sing by saying aye.
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 Post-God Housing, I'd like to...
Yeah, we can just, we can leave that on as a placeholder?
Leave that on, yeah, placeholder.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I just want to remind everybody, tomorrow's the last day, right? Yes. For the, for the third. Try to get them back, and we'll go through them, okay? Willow Road Extension, connect with God and the Road, I move that that not be included in the warrant. I'll second that for discussion. Discussion, this was a price tag of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars the first time I saw it, so I'm not in favor of that at all. And again, with the tightening of the belts, I'm very proud of everybody doing, really working hard to make us look good monetarily, so I vote not to move that. Richie, are you going to?
Well, you guys wrote it.
Well, no, the votes on, the most, okay.
Votes have been made and seconded by, right?
Yeah.
No problem. All those in favor, sing by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? I'll oppose that one.
Right. Short Beach Master Plan, I'd like to move that on, not to the warrant, but to next discussion.
Sure, okay.
There's seven thousand five hundred dollars left or something?
Yeah, so the DPW Director, who is gone now, and I have talked about the fact that there are some experimental methods that have been recommended by the Conservation Commission that we're going to try in next spring and summer. And it involves, for instance, pumping saltwater onto the area to kill anything but the seagrass, and then actually pulling out the dead stalks using summer help. So instead of just pulling the whole thing up and starting all over again, at least giving that one more try, and we think we can do it for the remaining funds.
Okay. Next time.
You know where the mistake was made there. You know where the mistake was made, right?
Yeah.
The balloon, yep, go ahead.
The weeds. I don't know if the saltwater's going to kill them. You can try.
Yeah.
The East Point Lodge Park, I move not to include this in the warrant.
What, what article is this?
Installation of a split-rail fence around the periphery of the Lodge Park. I'll second that for...
Gentlemen, you go out there, we've lost two college professors out there. We've got to have a fence, so if when people walk up there, the sign posted, there's some sort of a split-rail fence just for, you know, just to look to say, you know, no trespassing beyond this point. I mean, you could, right now, you walk right off, they took on the cement wire, you walk up there, you can walk right down on the, on the cliffs.
I know that, but, you know, and, believe me, I had the, you know, we used to take hikes out there with the Boy Scouts, but the split-rail fence is not going to stop them from just going right over it.
The point is not to, not to stop them, the point is to put something up to delineate between the roadway and the walkway and the cliffs. Well, if you've got something else you want to put up there, let me know. I just, you know, it was an idea Jeff wanted to say, a split-rail fence, like the one down the beach. I mean, I just put a, we could put a rope up there, I mean, one of those rope deals, rope, rope, doper rope. I mean, whatever you want to do, I mean, you, I mean, you leave nothing, you're having, you're, you're looking for another accident.
Well, I think, I mean, again, I think they could have an accident just by jumping the fence. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, twenty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money for a fence, you know, just to deter people, and it's probably going to get, you know, it'll...
If it prevents a child or someone going out there that's not new to the, that doesn't really know this area, and go down a little bit, just like those professors, and they slipped and fell into that, I mean, we used to do jackknifes off, I mean, we know that, you know, right now, there's nothing up there. Nothing.
I know, I know, I've been up there.
Okay, I have no problem.
I mean, the walkway, the walkway around Lodge Park is quite a good, a good distance from the, the actual rocks, but, all right.
No, well, I mean, Brendan, no problem. Brendan wants to, yeah, Brendan?
Just a question and point of clarification. Is this something that could be included in a CPC article, that could be paid for by the Community Preservation Act, as it is a recreation in an open space, and if there is that big a concern, if we haven't procedurally missed the deadline to include this as part of the Community Preservation Article Acts, it might go to some of those funds that we haven't expended great deals from, especially, I believe, open spaces could probably be used as preservation and maintenance of open space. That way, it won't be coming out of the, the general fund, and will be in a, in a fund that we have considerable balances in, because we don't have suitable projects to spend in.
That's a terrific point. Would you look into that, please?
Certainly, I'll talk with CPC.
Thank you. That would be the way to go. I, I don't disagree with it, Richie.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine.
I just don't want to...
I just don't want to lose someone up there again.
Yeah, so.
Okay, next.
Can we vote on that?
Well, we can vote to transfer it over to the Preservation.
Yeah.
Let me look into our report back.
Okay, let's get that, okay.
And then Bayview Street, that I passed on to the individual, the petitioner, and asked them to submit a petition.
Okay.
And then the cemetery expansion, you have in there a letter from the Cemetery Commission, just identifying that they don't feel that it's warranted at this time.
I'm actually on the Cemetery Committee, and talking with David Wilson, who's really knows a lot, a lot about the cemetery, knows everything about the cemetery. He feels as though there's another 15 years in there left. And that's without even taking, if you look at Kennedy Court, at the, the end of Kennedy Court, we own that too. That could be part of it. So that would be quite a few lots. I think moving the cemetery expansion is going to be difficult. It's, it's way too much money. I mean, $3 million, 15 years ago is going to be $10 million now, so, about $6 million at least. So, I think it's, I'd like to see that disappear, for now, and...
Could the Cemetery Commission assist the town with an evaluation of what it would cost to do some of the expansion?
Well, I think the expansion, no, I think that would be something that you'd have to probably, we'd have to hire somebody to tell us what it's going to cost. I mean, someone that builds cemeteries. I think, there's one thing that we are asking for, to protect the equipment. We're going to get a new Kubota this year, I believe, and that equipment stays outside all winter long, the Gator and so forth, right behind the spin drift. We own that land, and I would like to see, get a price on putting up a building, a shed or garage, that we can store that stuff in.
I'm actually working with the DPW Director on that issue.
Okay, good. Only because, you know, if you get, if the Kubota lasts 20 years, it's going to last 30 years, if it's covered.
Why can't they store that equipment over in Bailey's Hill?
Well, they can, but...
That's what I think the DPW Director's recommending.
Well, the only thing is, then, he has to, in the wintertime, when he has to burial, he has to go all the way over to Bailey's Hill, get it out.
Yeah.
All right. You're talking about in the, in the fort itself? Okay, well, you know, again...
I mean, I don't know. I think it'd be easier to stir it in there.
We have a story, Jerry, in the back of the DPW yard, that he could put that in there, and that would cut his commute a little. But the DPW Director feels that it's best to have all those in one location, for protection purposes, so he, he's talking now about putting the Kubota there. But I'll come back with a report on that.
Okay.
I mean, I've just seen, I've seen the, the outcome of leaving equipment outside.
Yeah, just crazy.
So, the cemetery expansion, how would you like to handle that? Take that off?
Take it off. I would say take it off. Anybody? I agree.
Yep.
Okay, okay, great. Then what I'll do is, I'll modify the warrant. I'll try to shuffle an order that is traditional with our warrants, and then send it on to the FinCom and give you a copy.
Do you have pictures of the warrant on the front page of the annual report? Do you have a picture of what's going on there?
Oh, no, I don't. Do you have any ideas?
No, I thought we submitted already.
No, not the annual report. Would you, the annual reports, yeah, you've submitted the, the report themselves. We're putting together the larger document, but for the...
No, I'm talking about the town report, the annual report, the cover, and the backside.
Exactly. Yep, that's, do you have any recommendations on the picture?
No, we submitted already, we discussed it. I was wondering, who, what was the final decision?
When would, who discussed it?
Yeah, I'm not sure when we did that, but maybe we did. Let me check.
I didn't discuss it, but maybe the chairman does. No, I'm not meaning anything by it, but maybe it's something you won't want to do.
No, no, I thought, I thought someone talked to me about it, I forget who. And I said, yeah, and then they were going to call and ask permission to do it.
Yeah, I mean...
And that's the last I heard of it. I just...
I mean, if you said fine, that would be fine, but...
Oh, no, 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 no. I, listen, I, it's not up to me, it's up to the three members of the board.
Well, we can discuss, if it's, this could be top secret.
No, 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 it's not top secret. It's just, it's just something that we usually, you know, something we honor that has...
Yeah, that's right, so that's why it's top secret.
Let me reach out to you, and we'll have a conversation about options, and then we'll settle on that, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, someone called me, I, yeah, I thought that they contacted all of them.
I'm sure it was fine.
We also have two options. You have the back page, and we've been using that, and it looks great, so. All right, so let me make those changes. Moving along, the classification study. We've only made one mi, or two minor changes to the classification study, and those have to do at the request of the DPW Director. He has Public Works Laborer Part-Time and Public Works Laborer Part-Time Skilled, that, these are the seniors that come back each summer, they do a great job for our town. They've been coming back so oft, so many times, that they're at their ceiling, and so he'd like to raise the ceiling on that from $14 for the non-skilled, to $16, and for the skilled, from $1550 to $20. And that's just the upper edge of it, that doesn't mean that they'll be paid that, it just means that it gives them more flexibility within that range. So, other than that, the classification study is the same as it was last year.
Well, the classification study, we didn't accept last year. That was voted down at a selectmen's meeting.
So that went forward as Article 5. It's, it's, it was voted by the town, so, all we're doing is taking the same information that the town voted, and rolling that forward with those modifications.
But we, the, the classification plan was voted on. The study wasn't. We, that was shot down at a selectmen's meeting. So, I'll make a motion that we, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the classification of the, that recommended by the DPW Director, and to place it on the town meeting warrant for action by the voters of Nahant. I don't want to, I am not, not going to accept a classification study that the Board of Selectmen turned down last year, and possibly it was snuck into the warrant last year, in your, and, you know, your way of thinking. We, Salary and Classification Plan, right here you have Salary and Classification Study.
We can make that change.
Okay. You know, the plan is accepted every year, the study was not. So, I would like to see, absolutely, I think they deserve it.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, sing or by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, now we have a series of revolving funds that you just have to approve. These are traditional revolving funds, and then we also have, as part of the vote, just raising the amounts within two of the revolving funds, so Cemetery and COA. What that just does is allows them to spend to a higher cap, if they raise the funds. So, you've got a motion in front of you?
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to place the following revolving funds on the annual town meeting warrant. Cemetery, Council on Aging, School, Student Activity, and Recreation, and further to amend the authorization of the O.A. revolving fund from a not to exceed $7,000 to a not to exceed $10,000 for activities for the seniors pursuant to MGL 44, Section 53E, and the Cemetery revolving fund from a not to exceed $12,000 to a not to exceed $20,000 for maintenance, operation, capital improvements of the Greenlawn Cemetery pursuant to MGL 44, Section 53E and a half. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, sing or by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we do have a candidate for the town nurse. Again, Ann Hudson had to leave us, so we have posted the position, and we have an excellent candidate that has come forward, has been vetted by both Ann and John Coolen, and they highly recommend Deena Kivitt, and so if you're willing to confirm my...
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to confirm the recommendation of the town administrator for hiring and appointment of Deena Kivitt as public health nurse.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion?
Was there any other candidates involved, though?
No.
There wasn't?
No, and we...
No, else applied?
We really went out and tried to get candidates, not, not that Deena's not a great candidate, just that...
No, I'm sure, but I know that we have a, a school nurse, I, I thought that she was going to bite at it. Okay. I, I don't know who she is, I'm sure she is fine, so. The motion's, any other discussion?
No, motion's been made, any other further discussion? All those in favor, sing or by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
So, we have the quarterly reports, they're a little late, but Deb did her best to get them as quickly as she can. I'll be giving the quarterly reports to the FinCom on Monday, and we'll walk through those there, but you have them with you. Generally, the revenues are doing very well right now. We're where we should be on most revenues, but we do have some spikes in revenues, which are great to see. As far as expenditures, we do have some of the various budget lines that are under stress. Right now, the Board of Selectmen Professional Services and the Fire General Expense Lines are under a little stress. The reason the Board of Selectmen line is under is because we had Woods Hole Group that came out of that, the road and control, the audit, and then we had some legal action, just doing interpretation on the Town Administrator Act. So, that put us in a stress point, but what we're going to do is, we'll monitor that, and we'll try to use other budgets to keep that from going to a reserve fund transfer.
How did Woods Hole come out of the selectmen's budget?
We had agreed to pay for $4,500 out of our existing budgets, and so, that $4,500 came out of that account.
Okay, because I thought we put it for a reserve fund transfer.
Yeah, so, this was the amount that we were going to cover, yeah.
Okay.
And then, for the Fire General Expenses, we had added four call firefighters, because we were down significantly.
Yep.
And so, the medical training and equipment put that under stress there, but, again, we'll work to stay out of reserve fund transfer area. Town Council's a little stressed, but that's, we should be about 55%, and he's at about 64%, so I think we'll do fine, as we go through the end of the year. So generally, all looking good. The revenues look great. Again, I'll give a report to the FinCom on Monday night. Any questions? If not, we have two use requests. The first is the Nahant Library Science Tellers on 22217. Do you have a motion on that?
Yeah. Someone to read the requests for the Nahant Public Library, Enzo?
Okay, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the event request by the Nahant Library Science Tellers Program, 22217, at 10:00 a.m. at the Town Hall.
Motion's been made, second. Discussion? All in favor, sing or by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Excellent, thank you. The second one is the, we have a wedding ceremony that wants to happen up at Lodge Park, and that's on 6317.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the event request by Laura D. Benedetto for small wedding at Lodge Park, 6317 at 5:00 p.m.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion to second it, discussion? All those in favor, sing or by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, your name is.
And congratulations to the new couple, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay. Okay, is there any other business in front of the board?
We do have executive session. We can also move that, it's, it may be a little late, but it's up to you. We can move it to Monday?
No, let's go to an executive session. We're going to be going into executive session, we will not be coming back out to regular session. And the sole purpose of the executive session is, is performance evaluation, and also...
Contract, contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations with a, one of our major accounts. What's that? I can't see that.
Town Hall closed President's Day, February 20.
Oh, yeah, but Town Hall is closed February, well, we got a meeting before that.
Yep.
We got a meeting, we got a meeting before that, right? This is, this is the 2nd of February, right?
Yep, so we do have...
So we're going to be meeting on the 16th.
Well, we can say it again.
And we're going to be meeting on the 18th.
Yeah, we're over enthusiastic about that holiday.
Wait a minute, let me see, this is February, I wish someone would change, do me a favor?
Oh, yeah, you need 217, yep.
Would you put the calendar for 217 in there?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the wrong dates.
Do you have a vote on the executive session?
Okay, I move that the Board go into executive session.
Motion's been made, second. Discussion? All those in favor, sing or by saying aye?
Aye.
We will not be going back into regular session. Good night, God bless.